We'll call Scottsboro Work Session Monday, February 15th. Order, the indication given by Tony Walder, ladies and gentlemen, excuse me.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, again, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for all of your gifts that you pour out over us. We invite you here among us this evening as we conduct and talk about the businesses of the city. We ask for your guidance and your protection. It's in your precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on tonight's work session is the public hearing for lodging tax. So with that being said, it's time to place for a public hearing. Is there anyone here against this? Would y'all like to come up and speak? Give that five minutes.
I don't think it's gonna take me that long. It's our shortest speech ever. I'm not a very open speaker. My wife and I have been here about five years in Scottsboro, five years ago, in the care of them, and we love the town. But we're just a retired couple who decided to buy a trailer from just south here, it is in the city of Scottsboro, to rent a fisherman and add a little income for ourselves. But we didn't know anything about lodging taxes at the time. But when we found out, when we watched, read an article in the newspaper, about, man, 12 percent, that's a pretty good amount to add to our rent amount. Then we found out the city was about to raise the, they're thinking about raising it to 14 percent. Now, we have to lower our rates in order to compensate for the higher lodging taxes, which decreases our income amount, which means we, as Scottsboro taxpaying citizens, end up paying a higher lodging tax. And also, it's definitely gonna affect the citizens of Scottsboro. I know y'all think it won't, but it will, because it will affect us. And it's easy for Scottsboro to raise the lodging tax, but probably not gonna be any protests from the citizens, only from the motel and other vendors. You know, at some point in time, there's gonna be a tipping point where higher lodging taxes hurt more than helps, because people will go elsewhere for their vacation, and that's proven fact. Thank you.
Can I get your name, sir?
John Cook.
John Cook.
Thank you.
I couldn't say my name, I'm sorry.
For those that just came in here, I started the public hearing, and the first thing I asked was if there was anyone here against this. And Mr. Cook raised his hand and came up to speak. So with that being said, is there anyone here else against this? No one else is here against this? Is there any here, anyone here for this? This close, public hearing for the lodging taxes. Is there any discussion from the City Council on this?
I'm the one that asked for public hearing. Apparently, for the exception of one, no one else cared to come and speak, so we were disappointed that we didn't hear from them, or if they were, had a problem with it.
And the one discussion that we did have, was it, was it gonna cover trailers that were gonna be rented out, or campers, or?
There, uh, there was discussion, Mr. President, of excluding campsites in the ordinance. That way, if you had local citizens that wanted to go to Goose Pond or County Park or any other campsite and camp for the weekend, they would not be affected. That was just in our discussion, it's nothing in stock.
So what he discussed, he would be?
Well, I wanted to, I wanted to ask Mr. Cook, is this a mobile home type trailer that you rented? That, that would be up to our discretion. The conversations that we had were basically if a structure was provided, right? But we would defer to Mr. Kenner to help us write that, that language in the, in the ordinance.
So we didn't, only we could exclude that from the ordinance, correct?
Correct. Do you have anything, Brian?
Well, I went and met after the last meeting with one of the hotel managers to discuss. I wanted to make sure the hotel manager understood what the committee had proposed spending the money on if the council had decided to increase the lodging tax. And after that discussion, it seemed to be favorable. So she's not present tonight, so I'm not sure if that's part of the reason. But now, you know, she was, she was opposed to us increasing the tax, but at the same time, if it was spent, what I understood from the conversation, if it was spent back into tourism, that it was, I mean, it wasn't, has a negative impact, but I'm not quite sure if that's still, do you have something? Sorry.
Yes. Sorry, my name is Pete Patel. I'm from Red Roof Inn, and I guess Mr. Brand gave to my property, you spoke to my marketing department lady, I guess, and I personally don't have any kind of oppose for this, but I missed out the part where you guys are gonna invest those two percent of money, which we generate from all this lodging business. So if you guys can explain us in detail where exactly all this investment will be, then it'll be really great and helpful for us. Because, you know, at some point, it becomes hard for us to explain our list, which are filed from outside, and they trial every year, they come up to us with the exact money price with tax. Let's say if my rates are $49.99, they will tell me it's gonna be $56.99 with tax and everything. So with this two percent increase of tax, we have to explain to them that where this two percent is going. So we don't wanna pass out any false explanation to anybody. If all the hoteliers will have clear picture on where this money is exactly going, I don't think so, anybody would propose it.
What, who are you representing, which hotel?
Red Roof Inn. Thank you.
So basically, is communication of where that extra percent or two percent go?
Yes, man.
Mr. President, would you like me to explain that again to?
Please.
Two percent, so the two percent would be broken down into three ways. One percent would go to a tourism grant, which roughly equates to about $40,000. The $40,000 would give up to the tourism grant that groups, and that, that would be defined by the council on as far as who can apply for that. Then they would be able to apply for the money to reinvest into overnight tours, with emphasis on overnight tours, which would generate additional dollars for the hotels as well. The other one percent would be broken into two parts. A half of a percent would go to the DRA, which is the Downtown Redevelopment Authority. The DRA would invest that money into properties, they would be able to purchase properties. I know Mr. Smith wanted some earmarks on that, so I've met with the DRA, and the earmarks that they felt would be appropriate would be to purchase property and use that money also to reinvest in renovating the property that the DRA owns, as well as putting money toward grants that other property owners can apply for and use that money to, to renovate their properties. That would help encourage additional growth between retail and commercial business within the district of the DRA. And then, I believe Tony was talking with the CDA, the other half of the percent would go to the CDA, Commercial Development Authority, to try to encourage additional, I guess, retail and restaurant establishments.
And the CDA authority actually very similar to the DRA. The DRA is just restricted to the downtown area, where the CDA has, has more authority in the overall city to develop those relationships.
The, the purpose overall would be to encourage additional growth commercially in, between retail and restaurants, that once the tourists come into town, now we have a way for them to spend their money in additional areas other than just the lodging tax.
Any other discussion? Question, if you have any. I know we talked about the, the two percent, and also just the one percent. We've discussed it a few times. I'd like to know if any other council members had the opportunity to discuss any of the proposed expenses with the DRA and CDA. I know Mr. Smith's not here, right? So, but if any of the other council members had an opportunity to discuss that with them? So basically, we need to make our mind up on if we wanna do two percent or one percent. Or we, I guess I could add if the next week's agenda, and we could, we could, maybe one of them, go ahead and discuss what we want to do, or if we didn't decide to do anything. So we've discussed this a few times. Would we need to ask Mr. Kenner to draft an ordinance?
I think it would be better to have something, as opposed to something specific, as opposed to something general, rather than having to attempt to figure out the draft ordinance.
So that would be? So do we have March 14th? I guess we need time to?
I'm gonna draft a grant before the next work session.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else on that, if we want? We'll go to number two, discuss the Attorney Attorney job description hearing.
And you have the job description and a memo to the mayor from Mr. Kenner? Do you have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions, group? Brian? Thank you, Andrew, for your answer. But I have plenty of time to look this over, and you can put it on the next agenda. Next time is to discuss the budget amendment for the State Department, mosquito spraying, eight.
I had to ask quickly to put in your folder some figures that I've been working on my several days about the probability that we will have to increase our mosquito spraying and larbside program this year. When we did our budget last fall, we based what we did this year on, not last year, but during the circumstances, may change, let me not. Right now, we really don't know what we're gonna be facing. We can look at the internet and read the papers and everything. It's doing well in a lot of places. I don't know if we're gonna have that here, but do you ever want you to be aware that we do have the capacity for increasing our program, but it will require more money from the council. The next step that we're gonna do is bid off, ask for bids from chemicals and larbside, and ask the council to approve it, or we'll have a vendor if circumstances do prevail that we'll have to increase it, we'll already have a vendor, or we can buy the chemicals program. We really don't know what we're looking at yet, maybe it won't affect this area this year. But I just want you to be aware of where we are and what we're gonna do next. I want to come back asking for approval on it. We don't have any money. We just want a vendor, or that if we do have to increase spraying, that we will need money at the time. The only money that we have now, and the chemicals that we have, we could run the same program that we've been running. But if there is an increase, it will take more, more chemicals for us.
How long, you were talking about bids for this larbside, how long would it take to get that, as far as I could see?
We could, if we get, we'll go through the bid process, and that should be about three weeks, and we could have some in within just a few days. We already have some on hand, enough to continue the program like we have, but if there's an increase, we don't have, we don't have any money for that. And the chemicals are rather expensive. This one gallon is somewhere between $130 and $150 for a gallon. Now, we're already in the process, as we do every year, of applying the larbside to a lot of standard water places in subdivision and places around town, where we know that there are ponds of water. We're already out spreading the pellets and the larbside to take care of, you know, anything that's, might be born in the next few days, so. A lot of our spraying is based on the weather. Real dry spring, dry summer, there's not a lot of spraying, but wet spring, wet summer, there's, it really wouldn't increase what we have to do.
Those chemicals fluctuate very much with the ball?
No, they stay pretty close to the same last two, three years, but there may be an increase in the usage of it across the country this year, so, you know, it's supplying the main line, but right now, that's what we're being told, it's gonna be about the same.
What timeframe do you spray for, or try to spray for?
Depends on the mosquitoes. Usually, it's first April, that's about coincide with ball games and everything, and we try to make sure that we're, you know, around when the football, and, you know, you're playing softball and team ball and all that. And it usually runs through October. You know, we had mosquitoes like two weeks ago, and I know y'all are aware of that, so it, it's just gonna depend on, on the weather. Usually, it's four to five months, and the increase here, if you notice, the numbers are quite broad, that would determine factors, gonna be, you know, as I said, the weather and how much rain we have and have warming it is.
Earliest rain means we'll have to start earlier. Anyone, that being said?
As I remember, sometimes I have pretty good memory, but we used to spray continuously at night when the sun went down, I had trucks, we'd somewhere spray. Somewhere along the way, we changed it to where now, we spray, basically, upon request, in other words, if you have a bad problem, you're gonna call us, and then we'll come out and spray. Is that correct?
That's the way it was last year when I came back.
And that's what we're basing this year on.
Except around the ball fields and certain areas, for example weddings, if there's things like that, especially around the ball fields or where there's congregation people, we spray, and we know where it's gonna be. But that's the way it's been done for the last several years, is, is upon request.
Well, I find it strange, but I've already had mosquitoes at my house in the last couple weeks, and, and with this disease that's come out, caused by mosquito bites, and I don't see how we can afford not to go back to doing what we were, I don't know why we should wait and see how it's gonna be, because irregardless of whether or not we get bites from these mosquitoes that have this disease, we get bites from mosquitoes, and they're terrible. And that's, I hear a lot of people complaining about, we don't do that anymore, and it, and I say, well, we have, you have to cower and ass, but a lot of people don't understand all that, and, and I think with the problems that we have with mosquitoes, I think we need, we need to go back to doing what we used to do, and that includes furnishing you the money to buy the stuff.
I have no problem with, as you can see, that first figure. First figure up there, that is, this, this chemicals for spraying, that's gonna run us through the end of February through November, it's those figures there. And we did, I did base that on spraying, earning spraying four hours a night with two trucks.
Like you, like you have been doing?
No. The way it's been done last several years, my understanding, is one truck would spray two nights a week, about three hours.
But some communities never see that, because we don't?
That's true.
They don't have to cower.
That's true.
Don't think. And to me, it's just, we already do it throughout the town. It's that important. If you're that one guy that gets bitter when they are a kid, and that's where it's really most acceptable, is to the children, I understand, it's much worse. I just don't know how we could wait and see if it's gonna be a problem or not.
It's entirely up to y'all. You know, we're afraid, right now, we've got about 35, 40 gallons on hand, you know, you spray with two trucks.
I'm not complaining, what you're doing is not right. I'm just saying that I think it's time for us to change direction and go back to doing what we used to do. I think it'd be well worth any money we might spend for that.
Mr. Patel, you said you have two, you have two trucks available now?
We do, we have two, two chains.
Did I understand you that they pretty much stay in consti- use February through November?
That's these figures that I'm giving you here.
They should run a full time?
Four hours a night, four days a week.
So the figures you're giving us is similar to what Mr. Smith is describing and running them throughout the community?
That'd be correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
We don't, you don't run them now throughout the community, the whole community everywhere, do you?
No. Only where we assess there's a problem.
But I, thank you. Maybe so. You're, you're saying for this money here, you can do the whole city every day, two trucks?
Well, we would probably do it on routes, like we did with our garbage pickup and our cars, I don't think you can cover the whole city 10 mile an hour, two trucks every night. I just mean, it's gonna be on route.
It's somewhere everywhere.
It's gonna be in areas that makes the truck be somewhere at night, if that's, you know, we've got the money, funds, right?
Can you get us, whenever you do the bids for that, for both vehicles traveling throughout the city, just spraying?
Oh, sure, we can, we can divide it up and run routes and everything, that's no problem.
Will that increase your payroll at all?
It will, and you can see I put some figures down, I'll trot them later, to just spray them.
Does that include fuel?
No, that's not including any fuel. We'll keep an eye on it. You know, if we start having mosquito problems, we'll, you know, we'll know that first.
It's a pleasure. How quickly can you get the bids, competitive bids left and back to the council?
I would think that we can probably have them out by the end of the next few days, and maybe have it open, maybe the end of next week, or whatever.
Thank you. We'll go to number four, discuss the budget amendment for the CDA. Mayor Parker?
Yes, last year, the Commercial Development Authority expended most of their funds for our feasibility study. That was for the Goose Pond Colony area. They, it was discussed during the budget about maybe replacing that money, but we thought that the final decision was, let's just wait until they have a need for it. And so, we've come time that we need to replace that money into, into their funds of a budget amendment of $25,000. Part of that, we go and cover a contract that was with the Retail Specialties for last year. That group has decided not to contract retail strategies again this year, but basically, this budget amendment is to refund the money that was spent for the feasibility study.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Put it on the next agenda. We'll go to number five, and the next one is to discuss the mayor's salary ordinance. I know we discussed it at the last work session, and there's been some other questions that have been brought up concerning, I guess, me and Mr. Kenner kind of covered that. I'll ask Mr. Kenner to kind of cover the ordinance again, and how, how it would take place in increments, I guess, as far as for each year.
It is illegal for council, for council to raise the mayor's salary during the mayor's term of office. Also, it has to be done six months prior to elections, which means that February, I believe, 22nd would be the last day that it could be done. I think the mayor's salary is $72,000, I think? I don't have those numbers here in the file.
Seventy-four.
And I believe in the past, it's been done in increments for each year. I think the mayor right now is the sixth highest paid city employee. At one time, he was the highest paid city employee. The proposal that I was directed to draft up basically establishes, gives the council the authority to determine what the salary would be for each of the year of the next term of office of mayor, whoever that person might be. The council, of course, gets paid based on the mayor's salary, 15 percent is what I think it is, and I think the president of the council gets an additional $50 a month, and I think the partner of the council gets an additional $25 a month on top of that 15 percent. This is something that we're already looking at, but it's y'all's decision.
Thank you. Nothing more is why I wanted to discuss it tonight, as well as that if you go anywhere, any sort of corporation, or just by any other subject, well, whoever is, is positioned in responsibility, or people you supervise, you typically make more than, more than they do. And I know we discussed some of the raises in the past, and some of the raises that we gave were based on responsibility, so I think it's something that we need to look at, and the window of opportunity to discuss it and get it done is rapidly approaching, so I think it's something definitely we need to look at, of course. Our mayor for the city of Scottsboro is, I think, as Mr. Kenner says, is the sixth. So by the time that it would ever roll back around to even be looked at, it'd be a former year from now. So we're looking at, after that time, if it was passed, could be eighth or ninth in the category, and I guess he'd supervise folks that are making more than he is, so. But that, that's where I was coming from, discussing this tonight, so I'm looking for any other suggestions or comments on this. If you have anything. And Gary's not here tonight. But I'd like to put it on next week's agenda. There's not any objections, we'll put it on next week's agenda.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
In the last 40 years or so, every time a raise is given to someone like the mayor or someone like the county? In the last forty years or so, every time a raise was given to someone like the mayor or someone like the council, it was brought up, discussed, been voted on. The last time it was done, it was added to any raise that a mayor might get. And the council was never mentioned, they just automatically, when, uh, with the mayor, the percentage or something like that. My only concern is that for the last numbers of years, no one even knew that the council was getting raises when it worked. I don't think. So what I would like to say is, I don't really have a problem with the mayor getting a raise. I think he ought to be the highest paid, I always thought he ought to be the highest paid employee in the city of Scottsboro for us. And, and I'm good with that. And I don't care if the city council will get a raise, if they think as a group they deserve that raise. But I also think that we ought to vote on the mayor getting a raise. And I think we ought to vote on the council getting a raise, so everybody will know. Instead of just easing the dent behind the mayor, I just never have been real comfortable with that, and I'm still not today. And not that it wouldn't change the inmate, uh, but I'd just like to say it's good that way instead of what we're doing now. And we didn't set up this the way we do it now.
Right. I think, is that something we can, we can do, question? I think the transparency on that would be great, I think, that's what I did.
I don't know how, but it's good, but that's just where I'm at.
I agree. Anyone else have anything? We'll put it on next week's agenda. We'll go to reports, mayor?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Wassler?
Just appreciate everybody coming out tonight, that's all we got, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Miller?
I don't have anything.
I just want to thank, uh, the folks that showed up tonight. Mr. Cook for voicing his opinion, and Mr. Patel, thanks for, uh, coming. That's all I have. I'll have a little journey, thank you.